This is called post-gym comments, but...
Definitely.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sorry about that. Roll call.
Alden Wright?
Here.
Alden Carmody?
Here.
Alden Stevens?
Here.
Alden Lockhart?
Here.
Alden Bellington?
Here.
Alden Hinnig?
Here. Thank you, I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Appreciate you being here. First item, consent agenda. The Finance Committee report on Alden Bellington.
The Finance Committee meeting actually was last Wednesday. It's a public hearing tonight. But the only, and the only real item that we spent much time discussing was the transmission with the one-time utility truck credit card statement. That's, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a 12-year-old truck, it's a 2000...
2004, or 2002.
So it's a 13-year-old truck, approximately 65,000 miles. You know, it gets some, some use that's not in the normal realm of use, but we just asked them to be aware to keep track of maintenance on those types of things. So, you know, that doesn't become a pattern because a transmission should last longer than that. It's expensive, it's pretty hard. Other than that, that's about all we've really discussed, other than, you know, some routine check things, some things that maybe got, you know, wrong account codes and things like that that we normally review. And with that, we would like to move approval of the consent agenda.
Right, thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Have a motion in a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda and discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Next is public comments. Is anybody in the public wishes to make a comment on the agenda items? Please tell us your name and your address.
Uh, my name's... My name is Candace Hall and this is Megan Coven from B&amp;L Bank on Second Street. And we are requesting a road closure, 1st and Second Street on Dryden on October 17th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. We're sponsoring the 5K.
On October 17th?
Yes.
From 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.?
Yes. We've worked with Chief Newhouse on a route to where it won't be, nobody will be running on Second Street.
And Chief's deal with this? It's not on our agenda, it's not on our agenda, so...
We didn't get it on the agenda, that was my fault, so I called this morning and Marcela just said that we could count during public comment, but that you guys might not be able to make a decision tonight, so...
Mr. Mayor, they were talking about us having a 5K run, but they had a timeline when they need to get a flyer published, and that was the reason that they came to the public hearing to put this on the, to be heard at this time. But they, the route that was discussed is not a primary route, other than a little bit of Johnson Drive, everything else is residential.
Okay, can you tell us him what streets you're closing on, 1st and 2nd?
Just Drive Street between 1st and 2nd, just that room right, right in front of the drive up.
What did you crushes? And how long did you say it was?
Just from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.
And that is a Saturday?
Yes.
What's the deadline for your flyer?
We were gonna just put it out tomorrow and say to meet in the B&amp;L Bank parking lot. And if, you know, it does get approved, then the runners will have a bigger area. Basically, we're just wanting to use that area of the road for them to be able to kind of get out and stretch and stuff and have an area to start and finish. If it's not approved, we can do that through our parking lot, too. So, we were gonna go ahead and still put our flyer out tomorrow, and then, you know, like I said, we'll move forward once we get a decision from you guys, so...
How many, how many are you expecting to have a...
We were gonna contact the civic groups and things, we just didn't want to do it too early. We're gonna send a flyer out to the school, it is sponsoring the back snack program, 100% of the proceeds will go to back snack. So, I mean, I would say for our first year, we would be lucky to get about 100 people. If we get 50, I'll feel like that's a success, but I'd like to shoot for around 100, so we're gonna contact as, you know, many groups and things as we can.
Any other questions from the board? That, if we put this off until the 28th, that'd be two weeks to advertise? Is that enough time?
Well, and we can still go ahead and put our flyers out tomorrow because really, we're just saying, you know, registration isn't, because we've got that huge back parking lot back there. We were just thinking that it would be nice for people to have a little bit more room to spread out, you know, for them to stretch and stuff before they start running. So, like I said, we're still gonna put our flyers out tomorrow, but we'll just move forward. If you guys do approve this, then they will have that room to do that. If not, we can kind of cram everybody, try and cram everybody into our parking lot. It's just really a convenience for the people who are registering, is really what it is.
What's the advantage to us putting it off until another meeting?
There is, it's not on our agenda, so it's one of those things where, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it's so that people can't squirt things on board last minute, essentially force them to make a decision on the spot, but...
Then why would she encourage by the city to come and present it?
Now, I, I...
Well, no, Marcela, she did, she just said that we could come and present, but that the boards may not make a decision tonight. And we understand that, we came with that, you know, realization that you guys wouldn't be able to make a decision, but we just kind of wanted to get it out there tonight, since we aren't going to put flyers out tomorrow.
My personal opinion is, this is a decision that, I think that that, and again, this is strictly my opinion, but not being on the agenda should be at the discretion, even though it's not, I think it should be at the discretion of the board to decide whether or not they would rather this become an agenda item to discuss it or not, but I don't see an issue with something like this, but...
And I, I understand, you know, we, we do have a protocol, we need to follow the protocol. I have just question. Thank you.
Well, with that then, I guess we will ask that you go ahead and place your name on our agenda for the 28th.
Okay, sounds good.
And we will have all the information and we will make our decision then.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? All right. Uh, next is the manager reports. First off, again, I wanted to thank everybody who attended the public hearing for the smoking ordinance, it went very well, in my opinion. I appreciate the respect and courtesy to each speaker, and we'll move forward with that after we get some more comments in. And the next thing that I had was, there's a proclamation for Constitution Week, so I'll read this real quick. Whereas on September 17th, 2015 marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by a Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate on the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I am counched by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Odessa to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd of 2015 as Constitution Week, and ask, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness whereof I appear unto set my hand and cause the seal of the, of the City of Odessa was ready to be affixed this 14th day of September of the year of our work 2015, and it's signed by myself and tested by the City Clerk Marcel McCoy. And that is all that I have, so I will open it up to the Alden reports. Alden Hinnig?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Alden Bellington?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Alden Lockhart?
Nothing to report.
Alden McCarmody?
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Alden Stevens?
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Alden Wright?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Department Managers and Staff Reports, please, CMS, Public Works Codes, and Parks Department. Any questions on any of those reports? Alden Bellington?
On the report, I think, two times ago, there was some questions about North Bell Street. Do we have any, any answers back on that situation?
Earthwork still hasn't shown up, they're supposed to come and build this one.
You said earthworks is supposed to come?
They're supposed to come and build this one. I'll get them then, and we'll get some, get a hold of them.
Okay, because that's getting pretty deep over there.
I'm sorry.
That dip is getting pretty deep in the room. Any other questions or comments? In fact, I've actually had two phone calls about that specific issue. All right.
We'll go over and do something to it. We'll fill, we'll fill in the end, but we'll say it.
Okay. All right, seeing no other comments on the reports, we'll move into whole business. Uh, first is a motion to waive the connection permit, connection fees and permit fees for Habitat, for the Habitat for Humanity Home. Is there any new information that needs to be added to that?
Okay. Did civil provide the fee?
We have the breakdown of the, of the...
Of the actual cost?
Of the actual cost, and that's what the board Alden requested, was that, was that information. Is there any questions about that? To the board Alden Wright?
Yeah, is the, are the caps being done on Russell Street or Marla Street? Because it is a corner lot, right?
It is a corner lot, but then we'll be done on Russell.
So if we do a patch on that street, that'd be the best part of the street, won't it?
Russell was chosen because that, the sewer is deepest on that street for us to go down to, so that's why that street was chosen.
If there's no other questions, then we'll entertain a motion to approve it. Alden Carmody?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we waive the connection fees, permit fees for the Habitat for Humanity Home.
Have a motion to waive the connection and permit fees for the Habitat for Humanity Home? Got a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second on the motion, is there any further discussion?
So the, the actual cost that we're basically waiving, a little over $3100 that I didn't have for it?
I got 25, 83, 90.
Plus the verb, the verb, the...
Oh, yeah.
Five, five fifty, so about $3100.
Correct. Have a motion in a second, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries six to zero, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you all that came to our groundbreaking on 3rd.
I appreciate that, myself and Mr. McCoy and Mr. Arie and, I don't know, maybe also there, but we attended the groundbreaking, Monday night?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday night, of the Habitat for Humanity Home for the Hillburn family. It's good to be there, so wish them luck.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, next is new business. First one, first item is a motion to approve Mr. Mosher's request for building materials for addition to his existing building. Mr. Mosher, if you want to come up and kind of explain what you're asking for here?
Well, first of all, my building is a metal-rimmed building, and there has been a current ordinance in the past stating that any building construction, new or old, has to be in certain ordinance with preferred materials, preferred materials mainly being stucco or brick. Means I'm adding on, riding onto the rear of our building, which is not facing a major street. And I was trying to get this whole process passed through before this ordinance passed, not even knowing the ordinance was being passed. I went to the Planning and Zoning Commission and asked them to approve the materials, and reading through the ordinance states that metalwork site is a, is not a preferred material, but it's not excluded either. It states that the Planning and Zoning of the Board of Alden can pass any material if they choose to do so. So what I'm standing before you asking to do is, let me add on to my building, grow my business with the same type of building material that is on currently, which is a metal-rimmed steel site. We're just adding on roughly, or we're exactly 20 feet back the same width as our building, which is 40 feet, so we're only adding on eight or 10 feet. When I double inside of our building, we're just adding wood inside of the building, enough to basically replace the office areas that we add on to the inside, to the rear of the building for our store and for our shop.
All right, are there any, any questions? Mr. Cable's here for Planning and Zoning as well, and if there's any questions about that process?
No, I, I still have to make a motion that we approve the recommendation from the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the metal, to match what he got on it.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the recommendation from Planning and Zoning to approve Mr. Mosher's request for building materials? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is a motion to approve the banned, yeah, that's the banned and disstationed marching invitational street closure.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Doing fine.
Good.
Uh, we're just requesting road closures for our Odessa Marching Invitational, which is on October 10th. I submitted maps and a letter that, what we were requesting, that the parking spots, the same thing as last year, is the parking spots from Second Street, from Mesa to Dryden be blocked off at 7:30, and then the parade route be blocked off at 9:00 a.m., the parade start at 10:00 and will end around 11:00.
Are these the same times that you had approved?
Yes, same times as last year.
Same, everything is essentially the same?
Identical.
Okay. Any questions? I'll, we'll take questions or, or a motion to approve this request.
I just wondered if you checked with the downtown business owners again this year?
Yes, we did.
I know they were approved of last year.
Yes, we talked to them.
Do you owe it to them to ask for, for that?
Yes.
That was, didn't know that they checked over the businesses.
Okay, excellent.
Very good motion.
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we approve road closure for the October 10th parade, marching invitational.
Have a motion on the second.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the banned street closure request for the Odessa Marching Invitational on October 10th. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
How many bans are you expecting this year, Mr. Meyer, sorry?
Um, as of right now, we have 10 registered. Last year we had 15, the year before 19, I think we'll probably be somewhere around 14 or 15 again this year.
It was very good last year.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, next is a motion to approve the request from the Church of Christ. Is there anybody here from the Church of Christ that wishes to speak? Okay, we have all the information in the packet about this, are you able to answer any questions that can come?
Uh, between Paul and I, we can.
Okay. All right, so we will open that up for a motion for questions.
Yeah. They stated that the alley to be closed is between, uh, 4th Street and Otway.
Yeah, well, it's between Otway, it's right behind the building.
I mean, I know where it's at, I'm just saying...
They're requesting the 75 feet of the alley to be, to be closed. That, that part, that portion, we have a sewer main and a manhole setting there. The church is willing to pay all the expenses to move that, to collapse that, that sewer by that manhole, and move it roughly 20 feet to the property line of, of where the, the other church building is, there's supposed to be drawings in there. They'll, they'll bear all that, the two lots from, uh... By them, by them moving that sewer, lots, uh... Okay, lots 20, lot 25 will no longer have access to the sewer. So they have combined, they're trying to combine lot 26 with 25, and they can never split that lot again because you only get to do that one time, but anyway, that, that lot has to stay in there. Mr. Parker owns the property next to lot 25, he had, there's a signed, really, thing in here that he signed that said that he was okay with the, with the closure. We still have access off of, off of the alley that runs between 3rd and 4th Street, we still have access to it, and we can go, we can go south all the way to where the new manhole is. They've agreed that they, they've agreed to everything that we've asked for, but, uh, what I tried to do is get all the information in front of you so that you could make your decision, but I'm not pushing it one way or the other, but...
So on the map that we have here, I'm looking at what I think are the man, the manholes that you've marked?
Yes.
At the alley at 4th Street?
Yes.
One at the, at the intersection of the alley tee, you have another, another one over on 3rd, 3rd Street, and then you have the two...
Yeah, that's gonna stay open, that's not, that's not the part that's gonna be closed.
Open, the one that's there between the 3 and the 4, that's the new one?
That, that will be where the new one will sit.
And the one that's up, uh, just kinda right in line with the 25?
That's the line that will be done away.
Yes, the one that'll go away. And that section of the alley will also go away. We'll no longer have to do any maintenance of it, we...
We, we don't do anything to it, anyway, the, the property owners take care of it.
Okay.
And I think Planning and Zoning's already approved it, and our city attorneys have already looked at paperwork.
On page 115, it says the alley runs between 4th and West Hotway Street. At the beginning, it says it runs between 4th and 3rd, which it does run between 4th and 3rd. There were six Church of Christ lot murder. Which was the meds from the...
The alley that runs between, that I'm talking about, that runs between 4th and 3rd, is, that's where all those trucks are sitting. They're sitting in our alley. They have her settled on 4th Street side.
The meds from the...
I don't know the company that...
But that's not the alley you want to close?
No, that's the alley that's, that will stay open.
And how will it be open with those trucks there?
Well, we'll, with the church parking lot there, we, we always have access, but we couldn't, we couldn't force them to move the trucks. The board wanted them to...
So, does that mean that we'll have a utility easement still across there?
You'll have a utility easement to that manhole, and it'll stop there. And we have power, we have a, you'll still have a right of way.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so that'll still be in, in the way we're, the way we're wording what we're doing, that won't have any effect on that, correct?
I believe their new building though is gonna extend over where that alley is now, that's the whole purpose. I believe their building's gonna be longer and extend over that alley that we're closing, right?
Extend over that alley, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason that they were wanting to lower that, that portion. But we still have, we still have right of way on Otway side where a power line is.
So where they're talking about putting a new building, we won't have anything under the ground there?
That's right. What they're talking about doing is tearing their old building down, filling the new building back, connecting it to the, the new existing building, but run it on across, on across that portion of the alley that, that is closed, and I don't know where it will be, there in that lot 25 or somewhere there.
So where does lot 25, 24, 23 tie into the sewer?
Right there in the, uh, well, there's no, there's no filling on lot 25 at this time.
Right.
But, uh, 24, and I think that's where Marissa Parker's house is, it, it ties into the alley there. This, this shouldn't affect him at all.
So that new building isn't gonna come down that far, and there's nothing gonna come down that far to affect it?
Well, it'll go back east that far.
I got you, okay.
Any other questions or a motion?
Have, have, have we in the past, like, given?